This is the Monday, June 14th, 2021, meeting of the Winchester Select Board. My name is Susan Verdicchio. I serve as Chair. I'm here with my colleagues Mike Betancourt, Richard Mucci, Mariano Goliath, and Amy Shapiro, who serves as Vice Chair. And we're going to start off this meeting with a joint meeting with the Library Board of Trustees to make an appointment for an interim position on the Board of Library Trustees. Take it away, Library Trustees.
Great. So, thank you very much. My name is Wendy Carl. I'm currently the Chair of the Board of Trustees for the Winchester Public Library. And we're here today because Mariano Callahan was a trustee of ours. Two years into her three-year term, she has recently moved and is no longer able to fulfill the role of trustee for the library. And so, we posted the position. There were five applicants. I interviewed each person. We met with each person. And at this point in time, we would like to nominate David Coughlin to fulfill the remainder of Marianne's term, which would be through March of 2022, when there's an election.
So, I suppose we could start with a nomination and a vote? So, I guess I need a motion, please?
Are we a motion to nominate or to appoint?
To appoint, sorry. Wrong word. I'm sorry. A motion to.
Just nomination. I move that we appoint David Coughlin for interim Library Board of Trustees position with a term to expire March 31st, 2022.
Roll call vote. Mariano?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes, and thank you.
Amy?
Yes.
And I vote yes, and thank you as well.
Thank you.
And do you need our votes?
Yeah, I guess I was waiting for Wendy to do the roll call for you guys.
Okay, so we'll start with Jane?
Yes.
Ingrid?
Yes.
Angela?
Yes.
And I'm a yes.
So, we're good?
We are. Welcome, David.
Congratulations, David.
Yes.
So, do I get to make my big speech now?
No. Tomorrow, you get to.
There will be no speeches.
Other people, the big speech.
No speeches.
Great. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thanks, everybody.
Very much.
Join us.
And we'll lead you to it.
Thank you. Bye.
Thank you.
Bye.
Bye.
So, I don't have a chair report, and Lisa's not. Oh, there is Lisa. Lisa has joined us. So, why don't we go right into the donations, if you don't mind?
Sorry. So, I move that we accept a donation of $200 to the Wildwood Cemetery from Eleanor McGeehan for the perpetual care account.
Second.
Roll call vote. Mariano?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. So, we have the Town Manager's Report and some appointments, I believe.
Yes, I'm actually going to start with the appointments. So, first, in accordance with Section 4-2B of the Town Charter, I have made the following full-time appointment in the Department of Public Works, Water and Sewer Department, to Michael DeLong, heavy motor vehicle operator. And I respectfully request that the board vote to waive the usual 15-day appointment period.
So, I move that we waive the 15-day waiting period for DPW, Water and Sewer, Heavy Motor Equipment Operator, Michael DeLong.
Second.
Roll call vote. Mariano?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
And yes for me as well.
In accordance with Section 4-2B of the Town Charter and in accordance with the rules and regulations of the Department of Personal Administration or the Civil Service, I have made the following permanent full-time promotional appointments to the rank of Sergeant in the Police Department to Matthew Alfred, Michael DeRosa, and Jeffrey Latouris. I respectfully request that the Select Board vote to waive the normal 15-day appointment period.
So, I move that we waive the 15-day waiting period for Matthew Alfred, Michael DeRosa, and Jeffrey Latouris in the Police Department for the promotion to the rank of Sergeant.
Second.
Roll call vote. Mariano?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Mike? Did you say? Okay. Amy?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. And congratulations to those gentlemen.
Okay, so at 12:01 a.m. this coming morning, the state of emergency will be lifted. There's a number of implications. My understanding from an email from Representative Mike Day's office is that the House is going to be taking this up tomorrow. I think if they take it up tomorrow, then we have a number of implications. So, first is outdoor dining rules and regulations. So, we'll be in contact with those that are doing outdoor dining about what they can and cannot do. We also have remote meetings, which impact meetings that are happening this week. So, in anticipation of this potential gap, I did speak to several of the boards and committees that have meetings this week. The library had a meeting tomorrow. Hope that I missed one. Sorry, I missed a conditional patrol officer, but I'll get back to that.
Yeah.
So, we have. So, the library is actually going to meet in person tomorrow. I'm not sure yet what John Serbeer is doing yet for the Housing Partnership Board meeting on Wednesday. And then, you know, we've got a couple other committee meetings, but Mary Ellen was able to send out a note to all of the boards and commissions. And we're doing our best to make some of the meeting space at Town Hall presentable. We have a number of departments that are all moving back into their spaces because of the flooring project. So, we have beautiful new floors. We still have cardboard down because we have a lot of moving and shuffling going on. So, we are essentially open to the public and that people can come in, but I think they just need to excuse our appearance and know that we have staff that are unpacking and filing and trying to get their offices back in shape. But you can also just come by and see our lovely new floors as well. I also have an update regarding the pilot program, the pilot agreement with the hospital from our conversation last Monday. I brought the proposed. I brought the changes outlined by the Select Board to the hospital, and I was able to speak with them around 5:00 p.m. today. So, they are not amenable to any changes at this point in time. So, there's a few options that we have. One is that I will probably need to reach out to you, Susan, independently as the Chair, brief you further on that conversation, see if there's an opportunity to to reach back out to the hospital and meet with them. On the two issues in particular, which will be on the agenda next week, I just want to sort of provide you with an update right now, and certainly you can reach out to me individually. So, one is the $44,000 that was in an earlier draft designated for a senior van. I know the Select Board had looked at whether they wanted to do an alternative project, certainly looked at a project from the Recreation Department. We discussed whether we could just put that in the Select Board gift fund. And that way, that gives the Board the maximum flexibility to decide at a later point in time. That's not something that the hospital wants to see. They believe that the van is a good project and should move forward. They're also eager to get this done before June 30th, so they can actually get the check and get credit for this current fiscal year. So, this is not something that I think we could reasonably push off into the next fiscal year, both for our purposes in terms of our fiscal year '21, our current budget, and from their perspective, they want to actually give us this money as soon as possible. So, I'll certainly work with Susan and do our best to continue to make our case. I think I've made some good points that making the amendment that Mariano had proposed at the last meeting actually gets them closer to what they need, so that it truly is a voluntary payment and not that the payment can be eaten up by any penalty and interest that they might incur. They did reiterate that they have not been late. They don't plan on being late. Certainly, they're not late for this current fiscal year. It is a. There's two more years in the agreement that, you know, perhaps we could reopen discussions for next fiscal year, but they're eager to have an agreement that covers fiscal year '21. You know, it is certainly a good, I think, a good value for the town in terms of the next two fiscal years. I didn't hear much discussion about those numbers. So, it's going to be something that the Board will unfortunately have to make a tough decision on next Monday. But I think the next steps is I'll reach out to Susan and we'll work on a plan. I did already discuss this with Town Council as well. The outstanding issues are not legal issues. They're policy and in one case, a potential financial issue. But they're, from a legal standpoint, it's sort of more in the Select Board's court at this point in time. So, moving on to the last conditional appointment. So, in accordance with Section 4-2B of the Town Charter and in accordance with the rules and regulations of the Department of Personal Administration or Civil Service, and as permitted by Chapter 704 of the Acts of 1941 as amended, I have made the following conditional full-time appointment in the Police Department to Patrick McCarthy, patrol officer, and I respectfully request the Select Board vote to waive the normal 15-day appointment period.
I move that we waive the 15-day waiting period for Patrick McCarthy for the Police Department as conditional patrol officer.
Roll call vote. Mariano?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Anything else, Lisa? Your section here?
Not under this section, no.
Okay. So, I guess we'll move on to the bond and bond anticipation note item. Hi, Sheila.
Hello. Good evening, everybody. We have here tonight two borrowings. One is a short-term bond anticipation note. One is a long-term bond. I'll go through the bond anticipation note first. We borrowed just over $2.1 million on a one-year term. The three projects involved in this borrowing, the bulk of it was for the Lynch School feasibility study. That was $1.5 million. The drainage system upgrades to the reservoir spillway is about $428,000. And the transfer station engineering, that's the engineering stage for the transfer station project, is just over $200,000. So, it's a total of $2,128,490. And the town received four bids. The winning bid was Oppenheimer and Company, which their bid was a coupon rate of 1.25% with a premium of $20,427, which gave us a net interest cost of 0.2876%. So, less than half of a percent for the one-year short-term borrowing. The bond is a larger bond. The total of that borrowing is $10.250 million. And there are three projects involved in that. The first one is a high school. This is the last piece of the borrowing for the high school project for about just over $1.7 million. And the Morocco School repairs are in this borrowing for $2.5 million, as well as the North Reservoir Dam is just over $6 million. So, we received five bids with very competitive, very close bids. Robert Beard and Company did win the bid with a net interest cost of 1.413%, so under 1.5%. They bid it with a premium of $1.5 million, just over 1.5, which reduces our borrowing costs. So, not only did we, you know, we get a premium, we got a great rate, but we now, even though we will receive $10.250, we're really only borrowing 8.965 million, because we take the premium after issuance cost and reduce the cost of the borrowing for each project in the borrowing. So, we actually borrow 8.965, but we receive the funding, full funding of $10,000,250. So, Amy has the vote. But Bond Counsel has informed me that we don't need to read the entire vote as we sometimes do, and that. But before we do the vote, does anybody have any questions? No. Also, this was done in a tight timeframe, because some of the projects were just approved at Springtown meeting. So, Bond Counsel is bringing us the documents first thing in the morning, and we do need signatures either tomorrow or by Wednesday. At the latest, we need at least three signatures, five is best. But if, at least we can get three people to come in and sign all the bonds. I will send an email out to you all tomorrow when we receive the bonds and let you know, you know, when they're available. But it should be by mid-morning tomorrow. So, if Tuesday or Wednesday, if you could make yourself available, that would be great. So, I think Amy has the motion.
I just had a comment. So, I just looked up municipal AAA rates, and for one year right now, they're selling at 0.31%. So, we're below that for our band of 0.29. And for 20 years, they're selling at 2.09%, and we are at 1.4%. So, that is an incredible interest rate that we got. So, thank you very much.
Yes, actually, both of them. And of course, the Hilltop Securities, who is our financial advisor, was very impressed too with the competitiveness of the bids that the town received. They were all very close, especially with the bond. Usually, the longer-term bonds and the amount of $10 million are very competitive, but they were incredibly great rates.
That's great.
So, I move that we approve all of the votes as written in the form of the document that was provided to Select Board members.
Second.
Second.
Roll call vote. Mariano?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
And I vote yes. That's unanimous. That's great.
Yes.
Well, thank you all. And I will send an email tomorrow when we receive the documents. And Amy, I'll have the form of the vote for you to sign, too. Usually, sign four copies of that. Okay? So, thank you again, and I'll let you know when we have it available for your signature.
Rachel, thank you.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night. So, next we have the MBTA agreements, or I think it's just the easements at this point.
It is all of the above.
It's all of the above. Okay.
So, Jillian, I've allowed you to share your screen. So, why don't we go through these one by one?
Okay, great. Which one do you want me to pull up first?
Let's start with the MOU, and then we'll jump into easements, and then we'll do the maintenance agreement.
There you go. Lisa, this is the one you've been a little bit closer on. I'm not sure if you want to run through it. Oh, you're muted.
Sorry, I'm muted. I'm asking you to zoom in if possible. So, the MOU was decided early on that we wanted to pull out certain items from the temporary and permanent easements, because they're more about the sort of conditions of the project. I do want to note that Angel Rodriguez is here. You might want to elevate him, Patty, to panelists, because he might be able to answer questions that folks have. He's the Deputy Chief of Staff for the MBTA, and he's been very critical in negotiating and helping to get to this point for the agreements. About this MOU sort of lays out the project and these recitals. Further down, it goes over work hours, which have been unchanged since we first started discussing this project and putting these agreements together. There are provisions here. So, the construction work hours between the hours of 7:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m. And then, any construction that requires single-track operation work be between the hours as presented here, 9:30 a.m. and 3:30 p.m. on weekdays, and otherwise between 1:00 a.m. on Saturdays and then all the way to 4:00 a.m. on Sundays. And then, the MBTA has a period in which they can actually shut down both tracks, because they don't have trains coming through that way. So, they can do that work between 1:00 a.m. and 6:00 a.m. on Saturdays and Sundays. This also goes over overnight work. It's usually not something that is pretty typical in a lot of our construction projects, but this is certainly one of the biggest projects we've seen in terms of public infrastructure improvements. So, there is an ability for them to do overnight work. They do have to, within reason, give us two weeks prior notice to the public. So, that could be like posting on their project website, which is the same project website they've had during the duration of this project. And also, 72 hours at least to email the abutters in a reasonable radius. This is for non-emergency work. Certainly, if there's any emergency work that's done, you know, we'll work closely with the MBTA to make sure that, you know, safety is paramount, as well as dealing with any of the overnight work issues that are at play. Can you scroll down? Actually, sorry, it might be. So, there's sort of meetings outlined in any here public meetings where they will periodically update both the town. So, they'll have a resident engineer that'll work closely with town staff. They're also proposing that a representative of the MBTA, could be Angel, could be his team, will meet quarterly with the Select Board. So, he'll be at your public meetings and will schedule those ahead of time to provide a status update and answer any questions you have. They'll also have that project website that's being maintained, and they will also, about every every two months, shall have, you know, sort of these public meetings to discuss the, you know, the construction work hours, the overall schedule, and any other things that have come up. They've certainly had a lot of public meetings. We've discussed everything from, you know, design and parking impacts and so on. I think these, because the project is going to be set and bid, I'm sure these public meetings will mostly be about sort of the ongoing schedule, the ongoing impacts, and be able to answer any questions or concerns folks have. I do just want to note and, you know, thank the MBTA, and we had a preview of what this would look like when they did the smaller-scale demolition project. And there are only some minor issues that had come up that we had worked through, but they were really great to work through. I don't want to jinx it, but I hope that that working relationship that we developed during the demo project continues for the duration of this particular project. And I think we've developed a good system and flow. Can you scroll down? So, noise control. We, you know, we worked on a noise control plan for the demo project. We didn't have an MOU, but we did it sort of in the spirit of this MOU. And I and I know that the T has also gone and done sort of precondition surveys with various properties, including the Chamber of Commerce building, which the town owns. So, they know they've done some extensive precondition work. And there are some conditions here in terms of trying to mitigate the noise, especially during certain hours. Jillian, any other legal items I might be missing? I'm sort of going over sort of the practical logistical items here.
No, I think those are the biggest items. This document is less legally dense than some of the others. So, it's mostly logistic stuff.
Anyone have any questions or comments? I can only think of one comment, which is kind of long-range, but when this finally gets started, it'd be great if the MBTA sort of project website had a very prominent static role on our website, so that people could find it easily. I think that, so they could check on status and overnight work. That'd be great. So, should we approve this, approve these one at a time?
I think we can go through all of them and then come back and, you know, do the approvals.
Okay.
Sorry, Ms. Grace, I was just wondering. Lisa, do you have a preference which one we jump to next?
Yeah, let's go with the temporary easement, and then we'll do the permanent easement.
So, here's the temporary easement. This one is very similar to the version the Select Board most recently reviewed. I believe the changes actually are fairly non-substantive. I don't have them specifically in front of me. The only outstanding thing is the final version of this plan that the, actually, did they send that, Lisa, the final plan? Double uses exhibit A.
The land acquisition?
Yes.
Yeah, I have that.
Okay, great. So, we have.
We were waiting on the surveyor to finish it out, so I had that. I can send that to you.
Excellent. Thank you, Angel.
Yeah. Yeah.
Perfect. So, when we approve this tonight, we'll approve it substantially in the form presented, so that we can just plug in the cross-reference to that plan. That'll be the only final change. The T went ahead and pulled what we believe are the correct title references, but they've agreed that by July 15th, they will go and confirm that those are the correct references. And to the extent we need kind of confirmatory documents, they'll go ahead and take care of those. Other than that, the easement areas are, of course, the areas that we've been discussing this entire time. The term of the temporary easement is commencing on the date that the Notice to Proceed is issued. And the expiration of the temporary easements is right here. It's going to be on the earlier of the completion of the construction work within each respective temporary easement area in March 1, 2024. So, the way that that is intended to function is because there are multiple temporary easement areas. Obviously, if one area is done, isn't needed any longer, then that area will expire. But in any event, all of the work in all of the areas will have to be completed by this March 1, 2024 date. The rest of it has not been changed since the Select Board has last reviewed it. Same obligations and rights within the various areas. Same in. Same indentations, same insurance. Notices, just basic where we send notices to one another, miscellaneous legal jargon. And that's, that's about it for the temporary easement without boring you all the tears with dense details that we've already reviewed, unless there are any specific questions that have made it.
Can I just comment that the votes will need to take on each of these documents? I think you've got listed at the end. So once we finish reviewing everything and we can answer all your questions, both in terms of the documents, the project, anything else, we'll go back, we'll bring that language up for each of the documents and make sure we've got the right votes.
Yep, that is right. I could do that. Next, I guess we'll jump over to the permanent easement. So similar form and likewise, we'll use the same exhibit A that Angel has and we'll just plug in there. Same situation with the title references. We believe those are correct, but of course we'll have them confirmed. This one, I believe we don't actually have any changes at all between, other than just cleaning up some internal notes. I think substantively, this is the exact same form as the form the select board most recently reviewed. So same easement areas, same rights and obligations and demarcation insurance, all of that.
Jillian, once we finish this, I, there was a, there was actually a typo in the MOU that we need to change.
We can see that. Do you want to shoot me an email and let me know?
I know it's a quick one. So the select board meetings are quarterly. They used to be every two months, but we decided that quarterly would be more substantial in terms of actually having an update. The public meetings were actually supposed to be every six months, not two. So I think what I might have done is I don't know, pop that two in there somehow.
Because I think that was, I think that typo was on my end.
Okay. I'm not sure how it happened, but we're definitely having more more frequent select board meetings than public meetings.
So sorry. So this public meeting should be six months?
Yes.
And so where the?
And everything else is the same. So it is, it is quarterly with the every six months with the public.
Okay, great. I'll save that and that was the next group. Last but not least is the maintenance agreement. This one is the one that has the most changes since the select board last reviewed, but the changes are minimal and we think agreeable. First and foremost, just referencing both of the stations up top because of course this is going to govern both stations. Then at least the, most of these changes we've discussed, that the term of this maintenance agreement is now 25 years with automatic renewals. There are some various termination rates that we've discussed. This, of course, goes together with the maintenance matrix that I'll pull up afterwards. One of the comments from the select board was asking about the snow removal from the MBTA parking spaces. That was one change that we made to clarify that the MBTA is responsible for all work in the MBTA parking spaces, which would include, of course, any snow removal. Maintenance activities, this makes more sense with the maintenance matrix, maintenance matrix that I'll bring up momentarily. One change that the team made was to clarify that they may conduct these inspections and put together these reports, not that they're obligated to, which is fine. It's, you know, their infrastructure will let them inspect and deal with it as they see fit. Maintenance responsibilities, again, we'll cross-reference the matrix. The reimbursement section is the one that probably has the most changes since the select board last reviewed, just to flush out the various escrow details. They, of course, function the way that Lisa described at our last meeting, that the T will get an updated estimate. As we discussed, construction costs have obviously increased a lot since the original estimate was put together. So the T is going to get new estimates to the extent that they exceed the prior estimates by 5% or more. They'll come back to the town, the town will look at the individual items and decide whether or not they want to move forward with it before they're committed to actually doing it. Anything we do decide to move forward with or that is below that threshold, the T will go ahead and do. And the town's going to escrow money with Anderson Krieger, will act as escrow agent. And the escrow money will go towards the cost of work that the town either opts into or has already opted into and is below the threshold cost-wise. Other than that, very straightforward, more identification, insurance, standard provisions that haven't changed. Various miscellaneous. And then one of the exhibits is new, which I'll just scroll too quickly. This one, exhibit C, is just our Anderson Krieger's standard escrow terms. Just saying essentially, you know, if there's dispute, that we'll hold on to it until the dispute's resolved. That acknowledging that we are town council and are acting as escrow agent doesn't conflict with that. Other various standard escrow matters. This all, of course, goes hand in hand with the maintenance matrix, which is, this is the final version. I don't believe this has changed at all since the version the town most recently reviewed. The only question that had come up was that the snow removal from the MBTA parking spaces, which again, we built into the document itself. And it's actually also here in line 34. So that's taken care of. And I think that should be everything. Unless there are any questions.
Yeah, so for the exhibit As, there was a document on the email on Friday. There was a Winchester Center Land Acquisition Plan Draft PDF. Is that what will be exhibit A or has it been modified since?
It has not been modified at all. The reason we sent, what we sent Friday was a draft. We needed to get the surveyor out on, on, over the weekend in order to finalize it. And there were no changes and I literally had that email queued up to send over to Lisa and Jillian. So there were no changes that were made. We just needed to get the surveyor out there in the property.
Thank you.
Thank you, Angel.
Anyone else?
Susan, if I could just ask a couple of questions?
Go ahead.
Just Angel, in terms of the overall project at this point, you know, we haven't seen you in a little bit. So just wanted to get an update. I know construction costs are fluctuating. Is there a timeline for when this project will start?
Yeah.
All due to anything or?
So this, today's, I don't want to underscore just how important today's vote is. You know, with today's vote, we can put the contract out to bid. So that'll take approximately six weeks. We're probably looking at middle to the end of July, the letting period. And then once we review those bids, probably another couple of weeks after that. Well, but I think, you know, the plan right now is to have construction begin by the end of the year, the latest. So that is the game plan that we're working with at the moment. Yeah. And obviously getting this now will allow us to be able to have more bids, which I think will help with controlling some of the prices that we're going to see out on the market.
And if the project, I mean, certainly there's a budget for the project, but given the construction cost inflation lately, if the projects, if the bids come in over budget, I mean, is there a plan to deal with that? I mean, would that hold up the project at all?
I don't, I don't foresee that stalling the project.
It's good to hear.
No. I mean, obviously, there's, there's, there's things we're going to have to go back and look at within the design. We would imagine, but I don't foresee that stalling the project. This is something that we made a priority and we've committed to. So we're going to, we're going to ensure that we see that through.
And any design changes that you need to look at due to increased costs, will that be, will town be consulted on those or?
Yeah, no, I mean, we'd be, obviously, we'd be open to consulting that. But well, we're not, I don't want to, I don't want to foreshadow something that hasn't potentially happened, but certainly see the, see the concern there. Yeah.
Great. Just one last question on the maintenance agreement. I know we've called out the two bridges at the center station. And we have left the one at Wedgemere silent in the agreement. Is it safe to say that, you know, what's extended for the center station bridges would extend to that Wedgemere bridge as well?
Sorry, I don't, could you repeat the question? I don't understand the question.
So we've defined, in the maintenance agreement, we've defined, you know, scope for the work on the different bridges. At the center station, there's the Waterfield Bridge and I think Skilling's Bridge, I believe.
Yeah. So the inspection of those bridges, does that work? What extent to the other, to the other station?
Inspection, yeah, inspection and not construction, you know, who's responsible for what on those two?
Yeah, no, that would extend to the other station is my understanding.
Okay.
Yeah, whatever inspections we do, one we do in the other.
Okay. That's all I have. Thanks, Susan.
You're welcome. Mike, Amy, any questions?
No, thank you, Angel. Thank you everyone for moving this forward.
Yes, this is great. Jillian, I don't know if the MOU has a vote on it or if that's more straightforward.
Well, I think what we can do is just to, I've just highlighted here where it says permanent easement agreement. We can take one vote and just list all four documents, the permanent easement agreement, temporary easement agreement, maintenance agreement and MOU, just we don't have to run through it four times.
Okay. Do we have to get a vote after the, individually of these two? Or can I read them both at the same time?
All at once is fine.
Okay. So I believe that we approve the permanent easement agreement, temporary easement agreement, maintenance agreement, and memorandum of understanding between the town of Winchester as grantor and the Massachusetts Bay Transportation Authority as grantee, substantially in the form presented at the June 14th, 2021, meeting of the select board with final changes to be approved by the town manager and her reasonable discretion in consultation with town council. And to authorize the town manager to execute said permanent easement agreement, temporary easement agreement, maintenance agreement and MOU on behalf of the select board and to take all other actions on behalf of the select board that are reasonably necessary in the judgment of the town manager in connection with the permanent easement agreement, temporary easement agreement, maintenance agreement and MOU.
Second.
We'll call vote. Mike?
Yes.
Mariano?
So I'm voting yes, but I want to say, you know, what we just heard is that the MBTA can go to bid tomorrow if we approve this tonight. This has been over a decade in the making. And there's been so many people from previous members of the select board, planning board members, design review, and other citizens who have served in different committees and work groups that have worked with the MBTA for over a decade on the station. So I appreciate the work that everybody who's here tonight has done, but also the work that everybody over the last, I think, 12 years has done, or however long it's been. So I, yes, I'm honored to vote yes on that and all the work that everybody did to get us here and to get us a new train station.
Yes, thank you for, for making that, that little speech. I'm sort of feeling the same way. And I would add to that list, our legislative delegation who also worked to make this actually happen. And I know that a lot of work that went into it on the part of the MBTA folks as well. So I'm very honored and grateful to vote yes. Did I get everybody? Amy, sorry.
Yes.
I vote yes too, Susan.
Okay, thank you. Got distracted there with all the speechifying. Sorry.
Sorry about that.
Great. Town Council, thank you so much for your service. Angel, you can take this great news back with you and need us to participate in the meeting next, next month. Where you need you all your approvals.
Well, thank you so much, everyone, and happy to be here. And I'm glad that we were able to get to this moment today. So it's been a long time coming.
Yes. Thank you, Jillian. Jillian, good work. Thank you.
Thanks, everyone. Thanks for everyone here with all the hard work.
Bye, folks.
So I guess that brings us to the building permit fee. And I think I see Mark and Mina are here. Thank you for coming. And the packet had a memo with some, some numbers, recommendations about raising the building permit fee. Susan, I just want to let you know that I had invited the building commissioner who Oh, I see its name. Yes. As well. Thank you. Thank you for coming, Al.
Okay.
So I know that there were a number of conversations regarding the building permit fee and recommendations for what we could increase it by, which is dependent on a few, you know, a few goals that the select board in town have. There are two major considerations. One is this, the new e-permitting software that the town was able to get a grant for the the setup, but not anything to cover the ongoing annual costs, which are approximately $27,000 a year. Those costs are currently incorporated in the fiscal year '22 budget for the building department. So it is there and it was approved as, as part of town meeting. But there was discussion about whether it made sense for the building permit fee to cover that cost. So in the memo, I outlined that for the last full year for 2020, the building permit revenue was just over $1 million. It was $1,400,000. The current building fee is $15 per $1,000. So if we sort of want to look at the impacts of raising the funds to cover various costs, so for example, the e-permitting costs would be, it would be a 41 cent per $1,000 increase to cover the cost. I know the, the building commissioner might have some more information too about the, you know, the kinds of permits that are pulled and the various, you know, direct impacts it would have to be because it's, it might be hard to kind of, for people to understand exactly what X cents per $1,000 actually means. Yeah, that would be, that would be good to understand. And I would also have a question about when the last time we adjusted the, or the town adjusted the building permit fees might have been. How long, you know, has it been since this was changed?
2006.
Okay, thank you. I think people are, could be concerned that raising the fees would make it hard on people who are trying to do small, small repairs, things that are very important and that they need done, but they would maybe put off or hesitate because the fee is too high. You have any thoughts on that question? Are there things we should maybe try to exempt? Or I don't know if we're allowed to do that, but would you identify anything as a risk, you know?
Do you want me to take that one?
If you could, Al, I know that you had kind of helped me understand that earlier today.
Yeah. Small, we have a minimum of $50 application fee for any building permit. So at $15 on a thousand, $3,000 plus work is $50. If you have a project that goes up to 10,000, say a bathroom or something like that, you're talking about $150 for a permit fee. We haven't, one of the reasons we didn't raise it was that the volume of work that has yearly, that has increased 15 years ago, we were doing about 700 permits, something like that. yearly, that has increased 15 years ago, we were doing about 700 permits, something like that. Smaller projects, you know, that was it. Now, we're, I think, over 1,100 permits. And these are not small projects. They're very, very expensive. So the revenue is just going up with the cost, the actual cost that the property owners are spending on their homes. And commercial buildings towards a lesser extent. So that was the reason we didn't adjust them, quite frankly. And those small projects, I don't want anybody scared away. I want them doing those small projects that, those are the things that the small maintenance projects that keep the homes up to date, painted, window repairs, window replacements and stuff like that. So the permit fees, I think, are very fair. The increase with this e-permitting, which we're going to have to cover, you know, Mark has got some numbers together there, but even if we added a dollar on, you know, made it $16 on a thousand dollars worth of work, we're not really raising a permit fee, say a $10,000 permit fee at $150, now it's going to be 160. So these aren't huge numbers that we're increasing the the cost of the permit, let's say. They're very fair. I hope that makes sense.
That's helpful, yeah. Mariano, it looks like you're muted. Mariano? You're muted.
Sorry, I'm on mute. My question was that it looks like we did about $70 million worth of permit values in the last year. Is that about right?
Yeah, that'd be a pretty good number.
And how is it going in this fiscal year so far?
I think we did May 13 million plus 196,000 in revenue. It's, I mean, I think I processed a dozen permits today of all varieties, you know? So, yeah, I, you know, I think we all live in town. We know there's not a street in town that doesn't have two or three trucks on it. So that's your building permit.
Yeah, thanks.
Commerce in action.
Yeah, there's lots of activity.
Yeah.
So, Susan, I'm just trying to reconcile this vote tonight on building permits versus what we did a couple of meetings ago. And just trying to figure out where we're at with the building permit. I thought we voted in a surcharge of $50 per permit. And I think we exempted some product, lower cost projects there, but I don't. Can someone just tell me where we're at with that? Because I don't see that in this analysis.
Yeah, procedurally. That is a good question.
So I guess my point is, if it's a, if our minimum building permit's $50, have we now made that $100? I mean, that's what I'm trying to understand.
I would hope not. I mean, if I, if I just raise it up, which a dollar, that permit, that $50 permit goes to $60, which is quite reasonable.
Right, no, I get what you're saying, Al, and I get, you know, what's before the board tonight. I'm just trying to figure out what we did a couple of weeks.
I don't know what you did on that one.
Mina, maybe you could help us out here. What we did, what we might want to do to modify it or make this legally better.
Sure, I think so. I was not at the meeting where the surcharge was voted, but my understanding is that the vote was phrased as a surcharge, but that, I think as Al described a minute ago, and it would take effect July 1st was the idea.
Right.
But as Al described, the way that building permit fees are actually assessed is not based on sort of a set of sub-fees, so that you would include a surcharge. There was also a concern that I had raised that a surcharge makes it possible for someone to argue that what you were doing was not a fee as opposed to a fee to cover the services. So, and that, and speaking a little bit more with Mike and with Lisa and Mark about what the intent of the vote was, it was clear that it was to raise revenue to compensate for expenses that the building department was going to be incurring, partly for the new permit system and partly for sustainability initiatives. Now, the money's not earmarked for that. That was part of the question. That was before town meeting, but it is supposed to be roughly proportional, sort of the legal standard. So the suggestion was to come back and do this, basically revise that vote, Rich, that's a good question, or clarify the vote because it really hadn't taken effect yet to make it clear that you were raising that money through an increase in the building permit fee as opposed to a separate surcharge.
Does that mean we need to rescind the vote from a couple of weeks ago procedurally? Or can we just vote this in and go forward with that as the current building permit fee structure?
Mina, what do you advise?
My advice is just to make it clear that this is the building permit fee structure and that you're clarifying the intent of that vote, because I don't think, I think you're trying to get to the same place, but the wording here may just matter for clarity that what you're doing is raising the building permit fee in this way.
Okay. Thank you.
So I guess we need to know the amount, which is in the memo. Is it one? I'm thinking through my papers here.
I think it's, it looks like we're looking to raise it a dollar per thousand dollars of construction value.
To a total of 16, right?
Yeah, so it would go from $15 per thousand to $16 per thousand.
And this will be instead of the $50 per permit surcharge?
That's my understanding.
Yes.
That's my understanding as well.
My understanding also.
Mike, is that your understanding, since you, you had the original motion for the $50?
Yeah, I mean, I do think that we should make it clear that we're rescinding the prior vote and that we should, this is replacing, and I don't want to make more confusion, but I guess that other surcharge is just sitting out there, you know, voted, and because it's voted in a different way, you know, you know, as part of one motion to rescind the prior vote and to change this to a dollar per thousand increase. If that, if that works, Mina, I don't know.
That's completely fine. I just, I just want to sort of, as, out of some, frankly, just want to make sure that the board, you know, doesn't feel like it's undoing work it did. I think you're trying to get to the same place, but
It's essentially the same, yeah, it's just different. It's more accurate, I guess.
So maybe it's a move to rescind the prior vote on a building permit increase? And to
Surcharge, right? Not increase.
Increase or surcharge. I don't remember what I said, to be honest.
Susan, I think you want to move to rescind the surcharge voted on it was the second Thursday meeting. I don't remember the exact
Yeah, and I don't remember the exact date either, which, all of which I should have thought of earlier today.
The second date would be May 6th was when that was done. And I have the wording if you want me to post it.
Sure. We can be precise.
I'm sending it to you in the chat. I'm not sure if I can send, show it in the email. Can you see it okay?
Yeah.
And that was from, that we voted on that May 6th?
Yes, that would be the second Thursday. The first day was
Okay, thanks, Patty. So I move that we rescind the prior vote made on May 6th for the building permit surcharge. And that we clarify the vote to confirm the building permit fee structure including the building permit fee changing from $15 per 1,000 of construction value to $16 per 1,000 of construction value.
Second.
Roll call vote? Rich?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Thank you. Thank you, Al and Mina.
Thank you.
And Mark.
Thank you. Lisa, did you, and Susan, did you want me to stick around for anything else at this point?
Don't think so. Let's see.
Why don't I just maybe say that the number five, the DPU letter follow up, one of the questions that came from the select board was whether there would be any issues from a legal standpoint in signing it. So I did send it to Mina, and Mina, you said that it was fine.
Yeah, no problem there.
So you know, there are no legal issues with us signing that DPU letter?
No, you're simply advocating that they open up an investigation, not, not volunteering to lead it or anything else.
Okay. Okay, good. Thank you. So Lisa, I don't think we, do we really need a Waterfield project update? That was kind of a placeholder, right?
I think only to say that we had an information session prior to this meeting. I think there were maybe 77 participants above and beyond the panelists and speakers at the height. So certainly a lot of people joined, and we could not answer everyone's questions live, so we do plan to go through all the questions, make sure they're answered, you know, group the liked ones alike to make it a lot easier for folks to sort of find and see their the answers they need and put that on our website, which is winchester.us/waterfield. And I think that there's another opportunity that, Susan, you can discuss for folks to actually discuss this and also meet the developer.
Right, the developer is going to have a open house style session on Thursday from 5:00 to 8:00 at the high school. When I discussed it briefly with Dave Trigorth, he's going to be there and bring some other members of his design team, maybe an architect, somebody also who handles the financing. So people can ask, you know, more in-depth questions about those details. And he, you know, he said he wanted everybody to be, you know, available so that they can have real conversations with with residents. And so that's, I believe it's in the, there's a large group instruction room on the first floor, but there'll be signs for people to find the room, and I would encourage any, any select board members to go as well. So should we move on to the T-Tech Bacon Street memo? Because I thought I saw some folks from T-Tech who are also here.
Did we want to make any final decisions on signing on to the DPU letter?
Well, I was going to do that after T-Tech, since they're here, but
Let me bring up the memo then.
Thank you.
Great, so this is, this is actually not the one that's included in the packet because I think the one in the packet is the one that we had formulated. Then we took that memo, we actually met with Ben and Roger. With Patty, can you elevate them or allow them to talk? And so I, based on that conversation, this is just slightly amended, and then in sort of the yellow highlighter, I put down some immediate steps that the DPW could take, also with town engineer input that the board can consider immediately or soon, and then others are kind of ongoing discussions. So, okay. All right, so going, just going through this. And certainly Roger and Ben, this is your original memo. It's just, I'm just sort of talking about the town's response, so feel free to jump in at any moment. But do you maybe want to talk about the intent of the memo, since I don't think we've discussed that yet at a public meeting?
Yeah, Lisa, this has been Keely. Thanks for the, thanks for the time. I don't, I don't think it was our intention to go through every detail. I do think that there's a number of, you know, specific recommendations which are more filling gaps or consistency as it relates to complete streets. And, you know, again, Lisa mentioned meeting both with DPW and engineering prior to this meeting, and there are some signage and especially road striping activities that can occur and should occur as soon as possible. We've been waiting to make some adjustments or painting, road striping in certain cases. I should say, we, the town has been doing that just in anticipation of, you know, wanting to get through the ever-source related work, but it's, you know, it's clear there's no fog lines in that corridor right now. There is a lot of signage, but there still continues to be, you know, heavy speed and otherwise. So it's a, you know, obviously it's something that I think we can attack tactically, obviously, long term. There's, there's opportunities for, you know, both, you know, major construction, especially at the, the west side of the, of Wedgmere Station where Bacon and Mystic Valley Parkway join up, but you know, there's also some, you know, more specific things that, that we would recommend that the town do to close immediate gaps. I think the biggest thing for, for the board and that what we would reiterate tonight is that, you know, we're advocating for the use of a safety zone, which there was a proposal in 2018 to do an engineering study that would be a first step towards creating a safety zone. That was a proposal by Tool that covered both this corridor and the broad area of downtown to create a safety zone that would immediately allow the town to implement slower speeds all the way down to 20 miles an hour. That's, that is what we believe is probably the, you know, the most accurate response from the town, is targeting this area, making it very clear to pedestrians, cyclists, and to vehicle traffic that we're in a different place and we need to act differently. And that does require a combination of solutions. That safety zone, though, you know, is a, is something that we can take, use here in Bacon, see how it works, and then, you know, we would expect to try to use that in other places throughout town. Places like Mullin and the Wrightlock Farm area, Cross Street and the Track Community Bike Way and Ryan Connolly Field. There's a number of different applications for it. And that's our, that's our biggest point here is, is to, you know, for the town to look specifically at doing that. There are already in this area, speed signs in both directions that are set up essentially to do that. There's a speed sign as you're coming east down Bacon towards Wedgmere, and there's a speed sign coming down Bacon towards Ginfield as you come from Medford area, Medford Way. And those can be metered down to lower speeds, so we already do have some infrastructure to do that. We could also include things like speed tables. speed tables that are being used on Main Street downtown or raised crosswalk specifically for the Those are the things that we think that we would advocate for. We think that the safety of the residents is, you know, at risk. And these are, you know, relatively low value, I'm sorry, high value, low cost kind of investments in the area. And we'd love to see, you know, the select board move on some of these things. Take a bigger swing at safety in this area and use that and learn from that in order to adopt these safety zones other places in town.
I want to add on the safety zone issue. It's not clear to me that the town has adopted the law that allows the select board to set safety zones. I thought that the adoption of the townwide 25 also covered the safety zones, which was part of the same legislation. But I'm not positive that that's the case. So that's something we have to figure out because if, if, if we haven't adopted it, it needs to go before town meeting. And so we should line it up for the, the next opportunity we have to adopt that legislation. It's also not clear to me why a speed study would be required. It doesn't seem to be the legislative intent. But DOT is currently telling towns that they have to have a, a speed analysis, which is a little different language than speed study. But implies that we should have something of that nature. And, and that's a good deal of the expense that was in the original quote from Tool for setting up a safety zone. But we do have flashing signs that Beth positioned a quarter mile apart. So that would actually fit the safety zone regulations.
So anyone have any, any questions? I mean, I know we want to do some, this is, you know, we don't want people being hit in this crosswalk. So I think there's a strong, kind of a strong desire to do something, do the things we can do quickly now. And consider, you know, consider some of the things that T-Tech has identified. But it sounds like we need to resolve some, just like the legal landscape about whether we have adopted the legislation that we, you know, that would allow us to have, that allow the select board to have it, you know, independently create a, these 20 mile per hour of speed limit in the safety zone and understand what the requirements are and whether you have to have some kind of, you know, how formal a speed study you have to do. But I guess it would open it up for, for questions from, from other members of the board and questions and thoughts.
Yeah, so I mean, what I would say is, you know, if we can reach out to the town clerk and see if town meeting ever adopted chapter 90, section 18B as local option. And if not, I think we should, we should sponsor putting that on the fall town meeting warrant. So that we can do this. Then from a short term, I think a lot of the town responses here make a lot of sense installing the, the yield signs, et cetera. At the intersection of Bacon and Mystic Valley Parkway, I don't know if T-Tech has had a chance to review. I know it was just recently released, even though it's dated August 2020, but DCR has the Parkway's master plan. That, in fact, they, they, they did that with, they contracted Tool to, to work on the Parkway's master plan. And I think they released it a couple of weeks ago, two or three weeks ago. But it looks like they, they're looking at redoing, they want to redo the intersection of Mystic Valley Parkway and Bacon Street. It shows long-term a separated two-lane bicycle facility there on the west side of Mystic Valley Parkway, which they would get by narrowing Mystic Valley Parkway. It shows the intersection itself changing with a, with a significant crosswalk there where the, where the pedestrian island, well, I'm not sure that it's a pedestrian island. It's just an island there right now. So I mean, I, I think we should, you know, should make sure that whatever we plan to do long-term on the west side of the train tracks there aligns with whatever DCR wants to do with MVP. This might be the time to, to engage with them on that. But yeah, I would like to see a safety zone. And if we do have a safety zone, a raised crosswalk as well. At that location and in the east side of the, where we have the rapid flashing beacon right now.
Yeah, we, we need to slow people down. If, if the driver had been going the normal speed and hit the, hit that kid, it could have easily been a fatality.
I'll also, I'll just add that, you know, wow, that's great news. I was not aware of the, the Parkway's master plan. So we can definitely, we will look at that. That's a big part of our, obviously our infrastructure. So it's a good, a good input. I will say that we were in front of this board maybe a few months ago and, and asking about improvements post-ever source as it relates to pedestrians, just getting out of the parking lot of Wedgemere. In that, you know, we've, we've talked with the town that there is, it's a gray area between MBTA, DCR and town. But we would encourage you as well to formalize some sort of clear bike and pedestrian path through that parking lot to get onto MVP. As people are coming through, actually under the bridge through the train station, it's, it's a gap. No one really wants to, to take it on because it requires some coordination. What it really requires is paint on the ground to safely get people across that parking lot. And whether it happened before, you know, the construction is done, after the construction is done or otherwise, again, we would, we would encourage you to work with town staff to make that a reality. It's just, it's advocating responsibility to just dump people into the parking lot when in fact it's the, the community bike way. So, and we think that that's achievable here too.
I, I would say too that and, and you know, we got, we heard from neighbors about this problem only a couple of weeks before the, the accident. And the neighbors were telling us that it was an accident waiting to happen. And I personally wasn't as aware of the perception of the problem because it's so much better than it used to be. But we have similar accidents waiting to happen on Swanton. And we have already had one accident on, on Cross Street. Also Waterfield Street. So, you know, we're, we're once we get the bacon rolling, we're going to go back and look at each of those streets and make, make some additional recommendations along the same lines here. Because they're very similar in their problems.
We've had a, we just had a, a meeting earlier. We were talking about a number of different topics, but you know, Roger is exactly right. Cross Street, Swanton and Bacon are all straight. They all pinch under a railroad. They're all underserved in terms of infrastructure for not, not necessarily today, a place where, you know, pedestrians and bikes really want to travel. And but also major corridors for us and, you know, making connections between neighborhoods and schools and places where people want to visit. And those are, those are places where we think, again, we could create a template here with Bacon and then just look to roll it out in other locations across town.
Susan, if I may?
Yes.
So thank you guys for, for bringing this to our attention. Certainly, you know, this is going to be a very busy place over the next, you know, three, four years, but the only MBTA station in town, you know, seeing, you know, we average 900 riders, you know, when things are up and running, you know, certainly this is going to be a very busy place. I happened to drive through the area yesterday and I went at 7:45 in the morning and then again at 5 o'clock at night. And the, the beach parking crowd has, you know, invaded the Wedgemere lot. It's full on, on weekends. And there were people, you know, walking across the street at all different areas. It's quite a scene down there on Sundays, whether it's 7:45 or 5 in the afternoon. But I think, you know, we want to make sure, you know, whatever we're recommending and wherever we land on this, that we're addressing, you know, the problems so that for the next three or four years, you know, everybody uses that area as safe, whether it's, you know, the parking, whether it's, you know, I'd love to see those yellow lights in the flashing beacon change out to red lights. I always thought the yellow lights were very confusing to motorists. And other changes. So I guess my point is, have we, has there been any engineer engaged to look at this stuff and realizing that this is going to be a very busy place over the next three to four years? You know, is there any thought to some type of engineering to make sure we're on the right path? I know the changes you mentioned now are minimal. But, you know, just make sure that we address the concerns.
Well, in terms of a raised crosswalk, I think it's a very good site for one. And that would require engineering. It would require a capital, a capital plan. So we're in discussions with the engineering department about priorities and so forth. We, we did talk about the, the intersection there and we, we're going to take a look at all the intersections across town and provide some input about, about priorities. We went through that exercise once before, but we're going to do that again in anticipation of capital requests. I would, Rich, I say that I, the, the one thing I would, would not say is that people are invading. They are customers, future customers of downtown Winchester. And there are thousands of them at the Shannon Beach. And what we want to do is welcome them to walk up into Winchester and, which from Wedgemere is no further than Shannon Beach. So we have a big opportunity with that crowd that's there every weekend.
Rich, I think I'll, I'll just finish. From a safety zone perspective, again, we have a lot of infrastructure, including those flashing lights that may, might require some adjustment. But that's a good start. And we know that engineering, obviously because of, you know, the, looking back at 2018 is interested in this concept. It's about getting it done. You know, finding, finding the funding in order to, to do it, finding, you know, maybe, you know, working, you know, hard on working within the rules as much as we can, but also taking some, up some space and, you know, creating some new rules for ourselves here so that we can really make it, make a difference. I think that those things are, are great opportunities here. For, you know, for me personally, I think this is a terrific opportunity for a raised crosswalk. We also talked about, you know, speed humps or, you know, multiple raised crosswalks. Again, to create an experience that is going to be different. People understand you're supposed to act differently within, you know, a bracketed area. When we talked about that with, with the town, what I, what I will say is we often run into, well, do you want one raised crosswalk or do you want, you know, two, but we can only afford two? Instead of looking at it and saying, what needs to get done, you know, and we've said one crosswalk in and of itself is not, you know, a speed calming element. So what are the combinations that we need to get done? I think in this case, you know, combinations of raised crosswalk and speed humps, you know, safety zones, signage. I think we really need to give people, you know, an experience that's somewhat different than other places in order to really do something other than put up more signs, you know, because we know that that's relatively ineffective.
So to try to focus this down, is it fair to say that we support doing the short-term or the easier things that are identified in the town? Town staff recommendation immediately. And since we are looking towards the capital planning process, developing some kind of proposal for a raised crosswalk here for the capital planning process. And that would be at a minimum and maybe adding the the, the other intersections or the other crosswalks along the bike path that, that Roger identified that have been raised and talked about before. Cross Street and Swanton Street. And then, you know, as long as we're just talking and doing some preliminary identification of, of future engineering work. Take a look at the, take a look at the it's late. The master plan that has been, has come out and figure out if there's something that we could do in coordination with that, that we could start planning to do on, on Mystic, you know, that area near Shannon Beach and the west side of Wedgemere. But that, that's kind of like the, the most remote sort of outer circle of what we should be doing, I think.
Well, the, the cooperation with DCR and the, I think it's important that they've made a, a major policy statement as Mariano outlined. The coordination with them could get you know, quite a lot done with the, and just very easy, almost symbolic stuff of remarking the, the parking lot would be a step in the right direction. But we will, we'll be looking at their intersection designs. I hadn't realized that they were that specific in their plan.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's an idea. I don't think they have the full, the plan, the design done, but what I would like to see, I mean, I think short-term, those things are right. So I would add the local option for fall town meeting to that list.
Yep.
And, and those, a couple of, two or three raised crosswalks. I see that as a short-term. Let's put it on the capital planning list now. What I'd like to see, I'd, I'd like to, you know, Roger and Ben, I give so much of their time. I'd, I'd like to take a little bit more of their time. What I'd like to see is like we did with flood mitigation, right? And what Jimmy Johnson and everybody that worked on that plan, 10 projects over 20 years, right? What can we do for multimodal transportation and safety of pedestrians and bicyclists and scooters and any, anything else throughout town? And, you know, let's think big. Let's figure out what we can do, what we can do with DCR and what we can do that we put in the capital planning queue years ahead of time so that we know that they are coming, right? The, the voters a couple of years ago approved an extra $2 million a year for capital stabilization funds. So I think that if we have some projects lined up that are bigger, that have, you know, separated bike lanes in different places. I, I think that would be a really good plan to have and, and start putting those things into the, until, until really a couple of years ago, we weren't putting that many traffic mitigation or improvements in capital planning, right? It was done one at a time. We really only started with the improvements around McCall and just a few other small things. So I'd like to see, just like we did for flood mitigation, do the same for, for safety.
Yeah, that, that long-range planning process is something that the, the committee itself can't the, the committee itself can't staff that, that, that has to be put together by the town, but we can certainly assist and work with the, the professional team from every department. And just for instance, one of the things that is clear here is that we have not consistently gone around and, and seen what the signs say and whether that conforms to the actual speed limit. So, the actual speed limit is, on Bacon is 25 miles an hour, and yet the signs say 30 miles an hour. And the flashing radar is set at 35. So, changing that all to 25 should be a significant test. But there's probably a lot of other signs around town that don't reflect the actual speed limit. And, and we've got various town employees going all over town and they could record where the signs are and, and, and what the signs say. For instance, Forest Street, I was surprised.
Yes, there too, I know.
I'll, I'll just, I'll, I'll jump in. I, we hear the mandate. We're, we're very much looking forward to, you know, continuing to work with the, with the town to develop that plan. We, working with engineering, obviously, Beth and crew have, have a number of requests already in, in capital. We want to respect that and obviously advocate for those. We do think that McCall, Highland, Everett, Cambridge Street, I mean, all those are, are great projects. But like you can see with Waterfield, it is, you know, if it's a half a million dollars, that's our budget. That's all we're gonna get done, you know, for, for, you know, a, a certain period of time. And, and so I do think that building up those reserves, being prepared for it, because we all know that the gaps are, you know, out there and exist. I think that's great, and, and we definitely advocate for that. I would, I, I do want to continue to push the, the, the select board to, to think big here. You know, one of the, with a couple of, a couple of areas of investment. You know, I was trying to think through getting, connecting schools and then, you know, places of interest, you know, within town. If we just keep connecting these places, we will, we will come up with a, with a pattern, a network that works for all of our residents. And imagine having a kid at Vincent Owen School be able to go to Mullen Field and then down to Ambrose safely. You know, that's a, we're not too far off from that with a couple of key strategic, you know, fill in some gaps. And I'm sure there are four other places, you know, in town that would have a similar situation. Highland Cross and, you know, Swanton that we discussed today. All of them need that same level of attention, but if we just start connecting these areas together, a separated bike lane on Lake Street to go to the, you know, past the tennis courts, down to the high school. Those are, those are manageable things, and I think it's our job to put it into those chunks. Because you've all heard of the projects before, but, you know, put them into, into chunks so we can, you know, prioritize them and, and work towards that longer-term goal. I think the flood mitigation example is perfect.
Then, yes, that's, that needs to be done, and that's a kind of a bigger, more amorphous set of discussions, but they need to be, need to be done. And I think Mariano is very interested in working on that, and I think this is something that could be one of our new bigger, long-term goals. Or medium-term and long-term because we do have some federal money coming that might be used for this, but that's another, I don't want to open up a whole discussion of that.
Thank you.
But I think, I think that maybe Lisa could, you know, organize this for us a little bit more. Mariano, looks like you have something to say.
I just want to clarify, yeah, I didn't mean to say that Roger and Ben needed to do all the work. I want to work with you. I mean, this is the select board's responsibility, right? We're the commissioners of streets, so I want to work with you since you do volunteer so much of the time and since you do ride your bikes around town quite a bit. I do want to work with you to make this happen so that 20 years from now, we're not in the same place we are. We can say we made this progress to get there.
Great, thank you.
So, thank you guys. Lisa, maybe we can regroup and, and have an update, and DPW can start doing some of the shorter-term things.
Are you okay with the DPW doing the, the things in the yellow? There, there are some things on this list that the, we're already working on. Some of the markings, obviously, the, the, the crossing guard. But adding the yield sign at the crosswalk here. And then, at least in these areas, starting to lower signage to 25 miles an hour to reflect the select board vote in 2019, and then continuing to try to do that across the community. I think though, I just sort of need a thumbs up from you to do that. We can sort of defer conversations about relocating the two, what do they call it? Speed tables later on in the spring, because that'll be next year. We'll certainly continue working with Eversource. I just, I'm gonna try to add to our ongoing agenda or list of agenda items with DCR. We potentially have a meeting coming up later this month, so I at least want to get it on the radar screen so I can bring that up.
Sounds good.
So, just a kind of a thumbs up on.
So, you're looking for a motion to authorize you to do all these things? Or is it consensus kind of thing?
A consensus will, will do.
Yeah. So, is it a consensus of the board that DP, uh, DPW should go ahead with the modifications that Lisa just outlined that are highlighted in yellow here? It's okay with me.
Sounds good to me.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Ben and Roger. So, do you want to just quickly take a, take a look at the DPW, the DPW, the DPU letter, the letter to the DPU? Mina said that legally, it's not, it's, it's simply advocating for something, not really obligating us, ourselves to do any, anything, any affirm, any affirmative work. And I, I believe I sent out a letter that I got back from the faculty member at Harvard Law School who's, works with this environmental law clinic, who had a, a list of the municipalities who've signed on. And those are like Arlington, Lexington, Lincoln, Melrose, Windsor, Wellesley, Westford, and then most recently Chelsea and Somerville and the MAPC. So, I think we're in, in, in good company signing on to this. And hopefully it will do some good to move things along with the gas companies. Any thoughts?
So, I guess, are we signing on as a select board or are we signing on as a town manager? I mean, what, oh, I see just different groups signing on.
We can do both, right?
Yeah, I think it'd be stronger for us as the town and as the town, as the, the board.
Fine.
So, it loo- looks like some of the, the town manager will do it and the select board, right? So, if we do it that way, at least it adds to it. Thank you for doing that research, Susan. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
So, in the motion, do I need to approve or give permission to, I don't have to give permission to you, Lisa, probably for your town manager signature, just to approve the select board? Is that right?
Okay.
So, I move that the select board sign the Department of Public Utilities li- letter stating the following order, to open an investigation into the potential policies by which the Commonwealth will achieve its net zero greenhouse gas emissions energy goal and the role of the Massachusetts natural gas industry in helping the Commonwealth move into its energy future.
Second.
We'll call vote. Rich?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
And I vote yes also. So, thanks for bringing us to our attention, Lisa. I probably would have missed it in my, in my messy email box, email list, and then that, I think the last couple of things here are to do the consent agenda, and then we have our executive session, so. Is that right? I think so. Okay, so.
Do I need to do these separately, Lisa?
They can be done together.
Okay, so I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
We'll call vote. Rich?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. And we do have need of an executive session to consider the purchase, exchange, lease or value of real property if the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiation position of the governmental body. And this has to do with the property at Swanton in Washington, and I do so declare that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on our negotiating position.
So, I move that we adjourn from public session to enter executive session, not to return.
Second.
We'll call vote. Rich?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes, are, are we staying on this meeting or are we going to?
I think there's a separate one.
I have a separate one set up. I can reset, do you want me to resend it to you?
If you wouldn't mind, sorry.
Okay, no problem.
A bunch of them today and.
Yeah.
Yeah, can I get that too?
Yes.
Okay, I'll send it to you all. Just give me a few minutes.
Okay. So, Rich, Mariano, Mike, Amy?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well.
Great, we'll see you there.
So, I guess I'll see everybody in a minute.